Good evening, everybody. Welcome to tonight's meeting, council meeting. It's May 6th at 6:00 PM. The mayor is attending remotely, but he thinks it's appropriate to have the meeting chaired by somebody in person. That person is me, I'm Paul Mayo, council president. I'd like to inform everybody I will be voting on agenda items. We'll start the meeting out with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Barb, would you please read the open meeting statement?
This meeting and all meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been published and given to the media in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes, so the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
Thank you, Barb. Would you take, take your role, please?
Sure. Mayor Smith?
Here.
Colin Dykstra?
Here.
Paul Hagan?
Here.
Eric Helverson?
Here.
Dimitri Martin?
Here.
Paul Mayo?
Here.
Corey Nagel?
Here.
Eric Olson?
Here.
Dave Peterson?
Here.
Scott Porczatsky? Henry Velicker?
Here.
Nine present, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Barb. Would you start the staff introductions, please?
Barb Noack, city clerk.
Aaron Johnson, city administrator.
Eric Bailey, library director.
Stephanie Reif, finance director.
Pete Craig, our chief of police.
And we have Josh, I think, in a control room. Next is the approval of the consent agenda. The consent agenda is a collection of items that we approve or not approve with, with one vote. If anybody has any, can identify anything on the consent agenda that they would like to have removed, to move to the regular agenda, now is the time to speak up. Okay, hearing none, I would be looking for a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Olson, second by Dykstra, to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Next, we have the regular agenda. There are no additions, Barb?
No.
Okay. I'd be looking for a motion to approve the regular agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Martin, second by Peterson, to approve the, the regular agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. We have a couple of non-agenda items, announcements to the correspondents. We have the annual review of the Code of Ethics. I'm going to assume that everybody has thoroughly reviewed the Code of Ethics, and if that's so, we'll just place them on file. Next, I have a presentation of a certificate of appreciation to Jeff Summer for five years of service to the city, specifically in the water department. Jeff is not here, so I'll just hand this to Aaron, make sure he gets it. Thanks, Aaron. Next up, public input. If anybody has any public input on non-agenda items, please step to the podium, state your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes or less. Anybody? Okay, this is moving quick. Unfinished business. First item is ordinance number 012025, an ordinance repealing and recreating section 12.20 parent 3 parent K of the municipal code to allow for the issuance of a Class C wine license to retail establishments. This is the second reading. We discussed this at our last council meeting. Has anybody received any feedback on this at all?
We did receive just one question about if they could obtain the Class B picnic license for the retail businesses, and the answer was no, because you have to be a bona fide club, chamber of commerce, veterans organization, or a church to obtain that license for a day or two. So for any special events, they would not be allowed to get that license.
Okay.
That's the only thing that I heard.
Thanks, Barb. Anybody else? Any, any further discussion on it? Would you like to vote on it? I'd be looking for a motion in a second to approve.
I move to approve ordinance number 012025.
Second. By Hagan, second by Dykstra, to approve ordinance number 012025, an ordinance repealing and recreating section 12.02 parent 3 parent K of the municipal code to allow for the issuance of a Class C wine license to retail establishments. Any further discussion? Barb, would you take your role?
Sure. Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Eric Helverson?
Aye.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Colin Dykstra?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Corey Nagel?
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Thank you, Barb. Move on to new business. First item is Wapaka area convention and visitor bureau request to close, for street closures for Strawberry Fest, which will be held on June 20th and 21st, 2025, and Fourth of July celebration. Mitch Swenson, there you are, Mitch.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. Just gonna kind of summarize this. Essentially, we're not looking for any changes than we had last year with Strawberry Fest road closures. That's mapped out on that third page. The only new addition would be a no parking zone on Session Street, and that's marked on there. This year, we're going to have a trolley shuttle bus that will move people around town during Strawberry Fest, starting at the Strawberry Fest grounds, and going to the rec center, where the train show has been revived, to the depot, to the north main street shopping area, and then to Hutchinson's house, and then back to Strawberry Fest. So I don't know if you want any, me to go through all the road closures, or just go by what's on the map there, or...
Are they the same as last year?
Yeah.
Then, no, don't bother.
Okay. And then, yeah, so, and the times and everything are, are the same. It's been reviewed by Administrator Jensen and by Chief Craig, or, excuse me. And then, the other thing would be the Fourth of July celebration, the parade again at 10 o'clock in the same streets as in the past, and then, again, the support of city departments with, with all of that as well. So, nothing really changing there, the fireworks at night and such. We have had a meeting with both Chief Craig and Chief Waller about safety, addressing safety concerns at, you know, future events, and just to kind of keep our heads above the water with all of that. So, it's been a good discussion thus far, and we'll keep progressing that, that way. So, I guess that's...
All right, thanks, Mitch. Any questions for Mitch? All right, thanks, Mitch. Appreciate it. Be looking for a motion in a second to approve the Wapaka area convention and visitor bureau request to, for street closures for Strawberry Fest and Fourth of July celebration.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Martin, second by who?
Dykstra.
Dykstra. To approve the request by the Wapaka area convention and visitor bureau. Any further discussion? We'll just do a voice vote on this. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mitch.
I just want to say, thank you, Aaron, for many years of great service. I've enjoyed working with you, lots of fun projects here in this community, so thank you so much.
Thanks, Mitch. Likewise.
Next, next up is license, license report number 1717, Class B fermented malt beverage license, Pakka Dragon Company, 1070 West Fulton Street, Amandeep Singh agent. Barb, you want to?
Sure. Thank you. So this is for a Class B fermented malt beverage license at 1070 West Fulton Street, and the license is contingent upon the building of a room within the liquor store, and the room is being built as a taproom for sampling of different beers that are sold at the liquor store that they might not want to purchase if they don't know what they taste like. So he's offering the sampling in the taproom. And what is being proposed for the building meets all the city and state regulations, and the license would be issued upon closing of all permits and inspections that are required to issue the license. And then, Amandeep is here, if you have any questions.
Mr. Singh.
Hi there. My name is Amandeep. Hi, everybody. And, any question?
How big are the samples going to be?
It depends on what you buy. Well, let me, I'm, first time I'm speaking in the public, so I'm not very good with that.
Sound good to me.
And, I've been in 19 years around here, so we've been pretty good in this business. We try to do best, best for the community around here. We've been trying to do best, and we keep, continue doing it. So, basically, we are the most famous liquor store in this area with the craft beer, which is kind of getting expensive. So, they're kind of costly, so sometimes the customer came in there, they look at the, and they say, okay, this is expensive, I don't want to buy it. So we are trying to offer them, so they can buy a single bottle, so they can taste it. While they taste it, if they like it, they can come to the liquor store and then purchase it. So this is our main target.
I get it. You have a nice beer selection.
Thank you. Well, only I can do the nice selection if I have nice people around here.
Okay. All right. Any questions for Mr. Singh?
I move for approval of license report number 1717.
Second.
Moved by Hagan, second by Nagel, that we approve license, license for number 1717, Class B fermented malt beverage license, Pakka Dragon Company, 1070 West Fulton Street, Amandeep Singh agent. Any further discussion? Take a, take a roll, Paul.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Colin Dykstra?
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky?
Aye.
Eric Helverson?
Aye.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Corey Nagel?
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
You're all set. Thank you, Mr. Singh.
Thank you. And I especially thank you to the, Aaron, for all the service you did for us and the community. That's where you did a very great job.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
Next is license, license report number 1718 Arcade and Amuses, Amuse Devices, I believe for the same company.
Correct.
Yes, okay. Mr. Singh?
I'm back here.
Okay, I, this is fairly simple, I think. Did somebody just want to make a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Moved by Peterson?
Second.
Second by Porczatsky, to approve license for number 1718 Arcade and Amuse Devices, Mr. Singh's company. Any further discussion? Let's do a roll.
Okay.
Oh, Dimitri.
Yeah. Are these like video games or gambling devices?
It's part of both of them.
Both of them?
Yeah, both of them.
Both of them in one machine, or different machines?
It's going to be different machines.
Okay.
Yeah. It's the same requirement from the state, so we following the, all the state requirements.
Any further discussion? Okay, Barb.
Corey Nagel?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Nay.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Colin Dykstra?
Aye.
Eric Helverson?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Obstand.
Scott Porczatsky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Thank you, Barb. Next, we have a license report number...
Thank you.
You're welcome, thanks. Sorry, jumped again. Next, we have license report number 1719, Lost Arts Folk School, Wapaka Style Show, 219 Jefferson, Jefferson Street, May 10th, 2025, from 9:00 AM to noon. Michelle Drake, board member. And there's Michelle.
Hi.
Hi. Tell us about it, please.
Well, I just wanted to mention that you may not have heard of the Lost Arts Folk School quite yet. It's been a nonprofit for about a year, and I'm on the board, and what we're doing is we're putting together a school that, as of right now, doesn't have a physical location, but it'll be offering different classes to the community. And the lost arts tends to be a term that's used for things like weaving, or like old fashioned arts, and it's a really popular movement now, and especially in Wisconsin and Minnesota, and there aren't really any schools, folk schools in our area. There's seven folk schools in Wisconsin, but not very many in the middle of the state. And so we've got that started, and we'll be having some classes starting up here in June. And being on the board, and knowing that the nonprofits had access to being able to use these one-day licenses, I'm also a part of the style show that's coming up on Saturday, and so we asked the board of the Lost Arts Folk School if we could use one of their days for this event. And so we're partnering with several shops in Wapaka for the style show for a couple hours on Saturday morning, and we'll be able to share information about the folk school at that event.
Okay. Thanks, Michelle. Any questions for Michelle? None. Okay, I'd be looking for a motion in a second to approve license report number 1719.
Move to approve. Second.
Moved by Olson, second by Dykstra, to approve license report number 1719, Lost Arts Folk School, Wapaka Style Show, 219 Jefferson Street, May 10th, 2025, 9:00 AM to noon. Any further discussion? Barb, would you take your role?
Colin Dykstra?
Aye.
Eric Helverson?
Aye.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Corey Nagel?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Thank you, Barb. Item five is a recommendation for a Bowlby lift station design contract. Aaron.
All right, thanks, Paul. Quick, Paul. All right. City council members, there's a memo on page 57 of your packet. This is something that was discussed just a few hours ago at our water and sewer board meeting this afternoon. Little background, everyone has heard throughout the budgeting process and after about the Bowlby lift station project that's happening. As a result of that, some of the infrastructure feeding from that was televised and looked at from our public works department. What was found is sections of Union Street and Smith Street are undersized for the amount of load that they're carrying, so we wanted to upgrade those, that was known. As we started talking about it, we also started talking about South Harrison Street and, let's see, and South Morton Street, because those are sections of street that are not currently sewered, a lot of septic systems in that area. Jesse Landry, our wastewater superintendent, did a little bit of research on his own, and subtract, I think there's two newer ones, is my understanding, but the rest, if you take the rest of them, the average age of the septic that exists is 34-plus years old, and I think there's one that's 50 years old, so a lot of them are on borrowed time currently. So, right now, as we're talking about needing to do this design for the Bowlby lift station, and needing to do it for the Union Street and Smith Street mains, we thought it made a lot of sense to also design it for those areas that are not currently sewed, get those sewed as a part of this project potentially, but we're not talking about, we're not talking about construction yet, we're just talking about when we're doing the design, we might as well do this even for the entire area. Construction would come later. I'm going to just show you a couple pages, just to show you exactly what we're looking at. I'll pull them up on the screen, so here's section one, or segment one, as it's listed. This is west, the west union section, that would be upgraded. That is current, there is sewer there, it would just be sized up. Smith Street, same situation, segment two, and then segment three, this area here, if we come around the curve of South Morton Street, and then we continue down south of South Harrison Street, that's the area that is not currently sewed, and that's what we'd be designing to potentially be sewed in the future. We do have, and if I go back up to the memo, we have had favorable bidding and favorable prices come in for a number of projects in the sewer, these sewer revenue bonds for this year and next year. I think we're sitting on about over $500,000 savings from those projects. This bid, you can see the low bid, we got, we had two, one was from McMahon, and one was from Strand. McMahon is on, man, I almost forgot that you were on. I'm speaking too much. McMahon is who we're recommending, they came in at $61,000. Strand was, I've got a couple different memos here, one from Justin, for me, and Strand came in at $97,500. Both of those were for all of the design work for segments one, two, and three, and I'm going to turn it over to Ben from McMahon, if you have anything to add.
Well, thank you very much, Aaron, I appreciate it. As Aaron said, $61,000, the idea is, a lot of this is designed for shovel-ready projects, if you will, in anticipation of replacing some of the sanitary sewer, which is going to be needed. In the sewer board meeting earlier this afternoon, it was mentioned that the Bowlby lift station that we're designing is going to have a higher output of flow, which is most likely going to surcharge the existing sanitary sewer. So, critical is looking at step one, which Aaron showed on the, on the screen, which would be to upsize that sewer to accommodate the additional flow coming from the Bowlby Street lift station. And then, if, you know, the, all the pieces fall into place financially, assessments, whatever, we can continue work to the south on step two or step three. The designs are for sanitary sewer. We excluded the lift station potential on Morton Street. We're going to endeavor to try and serve that without a lift station, but I think that Justin and Jesse did a pretty good job of vetting these options out, and they're leaning towards a possible lift station needed, so we can certainly serve the area and design the sanitary sewer there, and the lift station design is a whole different animal. So that would be a separate charge, or a separate design fee. We plan on doing all this work in the next couple months, so that if it works out well, we can do, we can bid out some of the design, or reconstruction work to, to include with the Bowlby utility work, and possibly getting better cost of savings economy of scale, if you will.
Thank you, Ben. As Ben mentioned, just kind of go over this one more time. Ben mentioned that this, right now, the $61,000 is for the work for all of the segments, assuming that we can have it be gravity-fed from Fulton Street. If a lift station is needed, that would be a change order, that would change the cost of the design, and that would come back to both Water and Sewer Board and City Council. But right now, we're a little unsure. I know McMahon and Strand both, both bidders, thought that we could gravity-feed it without a lift station, potentially. After that conversation, I know Jesse and Justin also thought that may be a possibility, so that's what we're hoping for, but if that changes, we'll, we'll, we'll be back.
So this $61,000 is for design of the upgraded sewer, sanitary sewer?
Yep, for all segments listed in the RFP.
Okay, well, this mentions Bowlby lift station design. I'm not sure where that comes in.
Ben, you want to, Ben, do you want to speak to that?
That's actually a good question. Why it says Bowlby lift station design contract? I think it's more, if you think about it, as an extension of that existing contract to design the sanitary sewer in this neighborhood. It's, it's a little misleading, however, that got put into the agenda, item five, but this is really Harrison, Union, Smith, and Morton Street sanitary sewer design contract.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you. All right. Any questions for Aaron or Ben? Colin?
Does the bid include doing, I guess what I would call potholing or utility locates while you're doing the design of the, the new areas to, to make sure that you know what's underground?
Yeah, yeah, actually, great question. We'll, we'll have, the price includes topographic surveying of the work areas within the right of way, and capturing first floor elevations in the areas that currently do not have sanitary sewer. The DNR says we have to endeavor to provide basement service, we need to calculate that basement floor elevation. So we'll be calling Dickers hotline, identifying water, electric, telephone, cable, gas, all kinds of stuff out there, so we can avoid that as much as we can.
Okay, thank you, Ben.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Okay, if you would like, I'd be looking for a motion to approve the recommendation for the Bowlby lift station design contract.
Move to approve.
Moved by Martin?
Second.
Second by Porczatsky, to approve the recommendation for the Bowlby lift station design contract to McMahon for amount not to exceed $61,000. Any more discussion? Barb, roll, roll, please.
Corey Nagel?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Colin Dykstra?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Eric Helverson?
Aye.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Thank you, Barb. Next up is a proposed develop, development agreement for 217 State Street between the city of Wapaka and forged in him incorporated. Aaron.
Thank you very much, Paul. City council members, you'll see a memo on page 76 of your packet. Just to give you a quick summary, as I think we all know, we did go out for RFP for a number of residential lots. We kind of did them in two different groups. One was the Woodland Estates lots, and then one was this single lot, which is 217 North State Street. Eric, thank you. Eric pointed out that it does say just 217 State Street, and the development agreement will, we would switch that to North State Street, just to make sure we're accurate on that address. But the proposal summary for this specific parcel, we got, we got one proposal. It was from Jeremiah Parker, forged in him. Jeremiah is here and can speak to it, if you have any questions for him. He is proposing to purchase the lot for $5,000. There is an incentive on completing the building, and we would rebate that $5,000 upon him completing the duplex that he's proposing, which you'll also see in the packet. If he does not complete it within the 36 months that we have outlined in the agreement, he would actually keep that lot, he would continue to pay taxes, but would not get that $5,000 rebate. He could build on it later, that rebate would just, incentive would go away. As shown in the attachments, this is a proposed duplex, it is zoned appropriately for that. I know in speaking with Jeremiah, I think he's targeting around $1,500 per month, per unit. Again, the timeline, 36 months, spoke about that, and of course, compliance with all building and zoning standards would be reviewed and ensured would happen through the review process. I will pull up a rendering, I think it's a really, really nice product that Jeremiah is proposing. Oh, let's see, it's in here, I got a lot of pages to go through. It's an overview of the lot, right across from plant one.
Page 100.
Page 100.
100, did you say?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm one page away. There we go. Thank you. All right, and here's a rendering of approximately what, what it'll look like. I know Jeremiah, I talked to him this afternoon, he said it might be some minor tweaks, looks maybe have to squeeze it a couple feet from a setback standpoint and such, but this is the concept he's looking at, so.[1783.13] Jerem, if you guys have any questions for Jeremiah, Jeremiah is here to answer them. Jeremiah, if you would step to the podium in case council does have any questions.
Is the house, front of the house gonna be facing State Street or Mill Street?
We are still working on that, we would like the, the front of the house, it's all gonna depend on access off of where we're gonna be coming off of. So we have the alleyway and then we have State Street and we got Mill Street. To be honest, I think State Street would be the, the, the better option personally, but we're open to what kind of the city has to say on what we do for access. The front of the house would face Mill Street as of right now in, in the accordance to the renderings.
From the State Street perspect, perspective, perspective, the lot appeared to be deeper than it is wide.
Yes, yep, and it's, it got some interesting setbacks as well, too. So that's why we're, I had mentioned to him that we might have to shape some different footage, square footage in the rendering, so.
I walk by there every morning.
Well, we can hope, we can make it a great site to look at every day.
That'd be nice, thank you.
Thank you for your interest in building in the city. I'm just curious about the name of your company, is there some special meaning behind that?
Yeah, so just my family and I, it's a family owned business here. We live just on the other side in Portage County. My wife and I, we are Bible believing Christians and we believe that we are constantly forged and hit and refined to be more like him. And we wanna show that in our everyday walk and our work and everybody we come in touch with, so. Yeah, that's why we have that name.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Paul.
So this lot was originally empty for site clearance for trucks for the foundry. Was that considered in this situation? Yeah, actually, Paul, I just learned that not too long ago from Mayor Smith. We had that conversation when we were reviewing these RFPs and yes, that is because of the entrance to plant one that comes straight off of State Street now, that is no longer needed.
Okay.
Good question.
Thank you. Scott?
Yeah, for those of you who remember, there was a house there many, many years ago. I can't even believe if it burnt down or there was starting. So it is, was residential, I'm glad to see it's coming back to residential because Paul and I, that's our district and we like to.
Our turf.
Keep it spruced up, it's great.
Oh, Colin, sorry.
Is there any, I don't see any requirement, but is there a goal or a requirement to try and keep the rental of the, the unit in sort of, any sort of affordable housing level or just market rate for whatever you're building? Or do you have any goals in mind relative to your prospective tenants?
Perspective tenants, we essentially, obviously you guys, probably all of you are aware, building costs continue to go up. And so because we're able to keep everything in-house and we don't have a large building company, we're able to keep our overhead down. So it allows us to keep our building costs down, which allows us to then rent at a lower rate. And that's, I guess, I get, where I would say is, as long as we can afford, because we plan to hold this long term, as long as we can afford to, to have that building there, then we'll keep the rates where, where they need to be to, to cover that, that payment, so. But I did, I do actually have a buddy that works at plant one and he works in relation to a lot of the staff that come in from out of country. And he's been building relationships with that staffing there. And so just being able to offer maybe something along that lines to housing for, for that. We actually had this discussion at church this last weekend, so, yeah.
Thank you, can I follow up?
Sure.
So after the building, the duplex is built, you plan on managing it long term?
Correct.
Do you do that currently?
Uh, we have a few.
Yeah.
Just not, not, just a little mompa.
Well, no, that's, that's, that's great. You need, we need more mompas to have rental places here in town. Thank you for doing this.
Absolutely.
Okay, somebody want to make a motion?
Move to approve the development contract as stated.
Second.
Moved by Pritchatsky, second by Dykstra to approve the development agreement with Forged in Him Incorporated as presented. Any more discussion? Barb, roll, roll, please.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Eric Helverson.
Aye.
Henry Velicker.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Colin Dykstra.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Corey Nagel.
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Thank you, Barb.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Jeremiah.
Thanks, Jeremiah. Item seven is a memo of understanding between the city of Wapaka and the Wapaka Professional Police Association. Aaron.
Thank you, Paul and city council members, this one's on page one oh two of your packet. Little background, this is actually something we talked about, went back and forth on, not because we couldn't agree on what the language should say, we just couldn't seem to get the language to where it made sense when we were going through negotiations, specifically in the fall of two thousand twenty-four. It was not critical, really, it didn't feel like to either side at the time and we kept getting hung up and spending too much time on this specific section. So we had decided at the time to, well, let's just agree to put a memo of understanding together afterwards and let's get through the more substantial parts of the contract, which we did. So we are in that contract, the January first, two thousand twenty-five to December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six contract. This memo of understanding outlines two, really two points. One is creating pay consistency for the swing shift officer specifically. That officer, when you equate it over the course of a year, amounts to seventy-six point one five hours per pay period. This would basically equalize that over the course of a year and make sure that that officer gets paid that amount consistently. So they don't have, he or she does not have up and downs throughout the course of a year. This has been gone over by our labor attorney. This is not an abnormal thing for these types of positions across different departments across the state. So that is one part of this. The other, the only thing I'll note on that is actual hours worked, of course, will be being tracked by both the police captain and the HR coordinator. So within the police department and within our payroll department. I do say later in this memo that there are no anticipated fiscal impacts resulting from the adoption of this MOU and that is absolutely true. There is the small chance in which someone could retire or someone could leave and they're on that kinda off week in which maybe they got prepaid for a few more hours, but if that happens, we will be deducting that from their final payout, so we'll have a way to track that. So really, there is no chance of that happening. And then the second part of this memo is sick leave. And it really was unclear what a working day meant within the contract. Most of the officers that are a part of the union do work eleven hour shifts, so we just define that as eleven hour shifts in the contract for all reps. But the total maximum accumulation for all of those reps did not change, so that remains at one fifty. Ultimately, it is the maximum accumulation that ends up potentially costing the city money down the road, because that has not changed. Again, we don't anticipate financial impacts of that change either. So those are what we are recommending to approve as a part of this MOU. This would be attached to the contract and then would be kinda automatically rolled into the next contract if that happens.
Thank you. Any, any questions for Aaron? Okay, I'd be looking for a motion to approve this memorandum of understanding between the city, city of Wapaka and the Wapaka Professional Police Association.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Olson, second by Nagel to approve the MOU between the city and the police association. Any further discussion?
Eric Helverson.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Henry Velicker.
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Corey Nagel.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Colin Dykstra.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Thank you, Barb. Item eight is license, license report number seventeen twenty Taxi Cab Drivers Licenses. Any issues, Barb?
Nope, came back clear.
Need a motion in a second, please.
Move to approve license report seventeen twenty.
Second.
Moved by Dykstra, second by Nagel to approve license report number seventeen twenty Taxi Drivers License. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, no. Motion carries. We have new issues or project discussion. Next is communications and recommendations to the mayor, mayor, you have the floor.
Thanks, Paul, just a couple of things. One, and maybe you already have, but our new city administrator, Josh Finch, has gotten your phone numbers and he is gonna reach out to you in the next few days or couple weeks here and just wants to introduce himself personally to you. He is planning on being in town on the twenty-third, May twenty-third, but really that's gonna be more for staff to get to know him a little bit more, but he might try and fit some of the council members in on that discussion to that date. And then also, Aaron just told me today, too, that we have a couple of good individuals for the, for our planning. Aaron, help me out here.
Yeah, Community Economic Development Director applications.
Yeah, and what did you tell us earlier today?
Yeah, I was able to have a conversation with our recruitment firm, J and J S, yesterday afternoon, sounds like we have two qualified applicants that we're gonna discuss later this week and potentially a third that they're doing a phone screening with probably tomorrow. So we are excited about that and look forward to starting that process, so. And Josh will also be involved in that process.
Thanks, Aaron, that's all I have, Paul.
Thanks, Mayor. Next, we need a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Moved by Hagan, second by Olson to adjourn until our next regular council meeting on Tuesday, May twentieth, two thousand twenty-five, subject to call. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, no. Motion carries, we're adjourned at six forty-two. Thank you all.
Thanks, guys, bye.